Hi everyone, hello, welcome. So, in our morning study group, we have done many acts and watched classes. So, to this extent, we will be watching the contract act. So, the title of the contract act is bailment. So, about bailment, introduction and bail in a year and basic rights of bail. And when you claim it, many important things are useful and useful in these classes. So, please tell us your thoughts on these questions and we will discuss them in the comment box. So, let's go to the video.
A, B, C, there are three parties. Okay, right? A, B, C, three parties. A, who is paying for the credit, plus, C is paying for the 1 lakh rupees. Okay, right? Now, B is paying towards A. Now, what is B doing? A is the maker of bill of exchange. He is paying for the bill of exchange. This way, I am paying for the money. He says, "I owe you this amount." So, he is giving a bill of exchange. Now, what is B doing? He is giving a disclaiming. What is the disclaiming? I don't have this money, so I give you this money. Again, B is giving it to A. Now, what is B's position? Acceptor of bill of exchange. Now, this is acceptor of bill of exchange. Now, A, B is the person who has to pay. Now, he is accepting. Now, I give the bill of exchange to B, and A is the one that is paying. Okay, right? Now, C is here, right? The one that is paying the 1 lakh rupees. This is the concept of bill of exchange. Now, we have to give the money to B, but we should give it to C. Do you understand? So, the maker of bill of exchange, A. Who is paying for the payment is B. So, he is the drawee. Then, C is paying the amount. I will tell you another concept alone in the negotiation agreement act. I am reading it. I will cover the portions and tell you. Okay, right?
Ah, okay, mom, okay.
Okay, fine. So, fine. Now, we will talk about the contract. Good evening, everyone. I said good evening and started. So, kindly, nobody down.
Praveen, you have talked.
Quickly, you can tell me your question. Tell me, okay?
Okay, okay. Okay. So, in the study group, we are studying regularly. So, because of syllabus, we have the same thing. Now, we have CPC. Actually, today, we have a deep debate. Mom, I am not going to do it today. Tomorrow, we have a deep debate. Usually, then, we have CRPC. Then, we have IPC. Then, we have construction. We have planned it and are going to do it. You can participate in any of these. If you have any suggestions, you can do it. You can tell us. We will do it. Then, we have scheduled sessions. We have scheduled morning sessions. We have added a group. You can attend morning sessions. We have scheduled them. From then, we will be in the group. If you want to participate, we will start. The same way, now, we are discussing a group. Let's open up and talk. This is a platform. We all have to talk. We have to avoid conflicts. This is a question. It is a question. Now, we have talked about this. Each session, tell us what you have done. This is a scene. They are following each other. Why? If someone called them, they will tell us. They are advocating. They will tell us. They are following each other. In this way, if you have frequent conversations with your friends, you can call them daily. You tell them to talk. In the class, we will talk about one day. In the same way, we will talk about one day. This is one. The second one. We are all in EMS. We are all advocating. There are students. We have started at 13:22. When the study group starts, it is complete. We have started from the beginning. Now, we have talked about it before. They are students in the middle class. When EMS started, they are traveling with their numbers. When they are students, they are active. This is a platform. Do you know? But, Madam Jelashmi, she does not have CPC or CRP subjects. She has participated in the class. Then, she has taken classes. Now, you can see, the district court is taking classes. They are now students. But, they are participating in the class. In this way, we have done three years of practice. We have to learn everything. Now, we have to work actively. We have to learn many things. Now, we have to learn many things. That is why EMS is asked. Now, I will clap for Madam Jelashmi. Praveen, you can talk.
Thank you. Fine. I have started the session correctly. I will start at 9 o'clock, 8:55 or 9. Until then, I will take the class. After that, 10 minutes for doubt session. Okay? If you have not introduced the floor, we will ask doubts. So, that, just without having a room, just 45 minutes. Plus, if you are asking, can we finish the bailment? Of course, it is impossible. Almost like a 30 section. If you cover 30 sections, at least three parts or two parts. If you do it, you can finish the concept. That is why, in 45 minutes, we will tell them about bailment. What are their rights? Now, we will analyze the contract of guarantee and indemnity. If we want to analyze the concept of bailment, it is very difficult. That is why, I have done this. Even if we read the concept, we have three categories. You have to know the three categories. So, that, we will cover all sections. Plus, this provision is the cure. I will tell you that. So, first, we will talk about bailment. How far is bailment? From section 148 to section 171, Indian contract act 1872. 169 to 170. To the concept of bailment, we will talk about three things. First, the first one, gratitatives bailment. What is gratitivest? Fine, I will say. We usually say, "There is no money." We have to consider that the consideration is important. Now, gratitivest. People gave it to you. That is gratitivest. Then, you cannot buy anything. It is the gratitivest bailment. Next, the finder of goods. Now, a coin is found. Now, a coin is found. Now, a phone is found. Now, a ring is found. You have put it. That is bailment. Finder of goods. A coin is found. He is the category of bailment. Now, if a finder of goods comes, we will look at the concept. Fine, I will tell you only this. Now, I will go to the concept. So, how do we do it? We will go to the section. So, that, everyone take your bear act. I am telling you, we will watch each section. We will better understand. Fine. First, section 148. Section 148 is a definition part. They are saying, "Bailment is what? Bailor is who? Bail is who?" Okay, right? Now, before looking at the ingredients of the section, I will tell you an example. Take this example. Girls, we are all here. What are we going to do? Now, we need to heat it. It is burning. Now, we will put the material. What are we going to do? We will give it to a tailor. What are we going to do? We will give it to others. What are they going to do? We will give it to them after we have heated it. So, when we have heated the contract, if I give it to them, they will give it to us. If they give it to us, we will pay them. This is it. Now, what are we going to do? We will use the material. Now, we will be in the position. Now, when we have heated it, what are we going to do? You give it to me. Otherwise, my mother will give me money. You give me money, and I will tell you. Now, I will direct it. I will tell you which direction to give the coin. So, this is the basic bailment example. In this way, we give the coin to whom? Now, we have watched it. We watch it and give it to them. It is a bailment. Now, we need to heat it. Now, we give it to a tailor. We give it to them. They will give it to us. It is a bailment. So, this is bailment. So, the general assumption of bailment is in this. Now, as per the ingredients of the section, watch. Bailment is a delivery of goods. Now, what is the reason for bailment? Only to the movable property. Goods, as you said. It indicates immovable property. Now, in respect of what? When something is removed, it can be done by bailment. Okay, right? So, first point. You know that bailment is always in respect of movable property. First point. Second point, watch. Bailment is what? Bailment is delivery of goods by one person to another for some purpose. Upon the contract that they shall, when the purpose is accomplished, when the purpose is accomplished, be returned or otherwise disposed of according to the direction of the person delivering them. The person delivering the goods is called bailor, to whom they are delivered is called baily. Now, what are they saying? When a first point, a bailment form is made, there is a delivery of goods. A movable property must be delivered by one number. First point. So, delivery of goods by one person to another person. Why? Shall upon a contract to accomplish a purpose. That is the example I have given. Upon a contract, what contract? There is no tailor. I will give it to you. You give it to them. Now, what is accomplishing purpose? Why are we giving it to them? We give it to them by heating it. We give it to them by heating it. So, that is accomplishing the purpose. After that, the purpose is over. Now, we have finished. What are we going to do? One, give it to me. Otherwise, my mother will give it to you. We give the direction. We give the direction and return it. This is it. This entire transaction is called bailment. Now, I am giving it to you. I am the bailor. Who bought the material? They are performing a specific performance. They are performing a little act. They are bailing. Now, did you understand the concept? Very good. So, this is the bailment. Now, bailment is a delivery of goods. A movable property is delivered. One person delivers it to another person upon a contract. If something happens, a contract is made. The contract is delivered. Now, if we deliver it for a purpose, the purpose is over. One, the bailor gives the bail. Return terms. Otherwise, the bailor is disposing it for other reasons. They are saying that. The terms of the bail are required. This is the entire transaction. It is called bailment. Whoever gave the coin, the bailor. Whoever gave it to him, he is bailing. So, this is the general concept. Fine. This is section 148. Next, section 149. Now, I am giving it to them. Now, how to deliver it? How to deliver is affected? How to give the bail? It is very clear that the delivery to the baily may be made by doing anything, which has effect of putting the goods in the position of intended baily or of any person authorized to hold them on this behalf. Now, if we do anything, like, the bailor is doing something. Is it possible to do something automatically? The position of the baily will go. Now, for example, if I go, I will give it to someone. Or, if I give it to someone else, what am I going to do? I think I should deliver the coin to his position. What am I going to do? I give it to him. Or, if I do something, I will go to his position. Now, I will give it to him. I will give it to him. Any act, I am doing something. He is taking position. For example, I am talking about a model. I am talking about a model. The model is falling. Now, automatically, I see the position of the model. Now, I will go to his position. So, that, by doing any act, whatever act I do, that has effect of putting into the position of another person, that is also a bailment. Fine. Now, do we give it to the bailor? Do we give it to the bailor? Otherwise, the baily is giving it to someone else. They are giving the direction. We will give it to that number. So, the bailor, when delivering the position, when delivering the property, when delivering the immovable thing, what is he doing? It is delivered to the baily directly or to the person authorized by the baily. Do we give it to the baily? Otherwise, the baily is directing. He is buying it for me. They are saying that. We will give it to him. That is 149. 149, are you clear?
Yes, mom.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Now, do we know about bailment? Do we know about bailor? Do we know about baily? Now, 150. 150 is duties of bailor. When the bailor is there, whoever gave it to him, what is the duty of him? That is, when the bailor gives a coin, there is a fault in the coin. There is a hole. Now, I am giving it to him. I know that there is a fault in the pan. Now, if they give it to the pan, what will happen? Intermittent use. Now, I am buying a pan. Can I choose it? So, it is intermittent use or exposes the baily to extraordinary risk. I know a fault. I do not tell the fault. Who gives it to me? I give it to the baily. Now, if I do not tell the fault, the use of it will cause damage. Otherwise, the baily will get more risk. Do you understand? Now, I give it to the baily for the compensation. I give it to the bailor. Now, for example, I am giving a spoon. Now, 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 I am giving a spoon. I am saying, if the spoon is burning, if someone is eating it, it will burn. I know this. Now, what am I going to do? I do not tell the bailor. Now, the bailor is eating the spoon. Now, I do not tell the fault. Now, if the bailor gets offended, this amount of compensation is settled. The bailor will get it. Now, the fault. You can see, the provision is very good. That is, is aware. In the first part, I give it to the bailor. The bailor gives it to me. I give it to the bailor. I do not tell the fault. First point. The second one, I give it to the bailor. I give it to the baily. Now, for example, I am giving the spoon. You are going to the road. You have used the spoon. Now, I am giving it to the spoon. I give it to the baily. The car is not available. I give it to the spoon. Now, I am giving it to the spoon. I am talking about 100 rupees. Now, I am giving it to the baily. I know this. Now, it will dry for a while. I am not aware. However, I know this. I have a sore leg. I have a sore leg. It is burning. I do not know if it is burning. I am not aware about its fault. Fault, I have a fault. I am not aware. In this way, I give it to the baily. Even if I give it to the baily, the bailor gives the spoon. The spoon is bothering him. Of course, I am responsible. Now, when you give the bailment, I must disclose the fault. I do not disclose it. I am liable. However, when I give it to the baily, I do not know the fault. That is why, I am liable. So, I give it to the baily by the baily. I give it to the baily for the baily. Of course, if I am not aware also, if I am not aware, what will happen? I will become responsible. Do you understand the difference between these two? 150, do you understand? Okay, fine.
Fisk.
Okay, good. Now, 150, watch. The duty of the bailor is to tell if the fault is present. If you tell, you will lose. You will compensate. This is the bailment for the baily. I am giving it to the baily for the baily. When you give it to the bailor, even if you know it, if I am offended, if the baily is offended, of course, you will compensate. This is 150. Okay? Next, section 151. 151, what are you saying? How do you say duties of the bailor for the 150 speaks about the duties of bailor? Duty of bailor. 151 speaks about the duty of baily. 151 speaks about the duty of baily. Now, what is the duty of the baily? How is it? Whether the coin is given, the baily is saying, his coin is the same. Now, I am giving a 10,000 cement. I am the bailor. I am giving it to the baily. Now, the baily is the bailor. Now, we must protect the 100,000 cement. How do we protect it? If it is not the coin of the coin, how cautious is it? Like, when he goes to the top of the tower, he is exposed. He does not click the wood. He does not have a path. So, in this way, if it is the coin of the coin, he will watch it cautiously. In the same way, the baily is watching the coin. As it is the coin of the coin, we must watch it. Now, 151, watch. Care to taken by baily. In all cases of bailment, all cases of bailment, the baily is bound to take as much care of goods bailed to him as an ordinary prudence would under similar circumstance. Take off his own goods. Take off his own goods of same bulk quality and value of goods bailed. Now, the baily is saying the fault is the duty of the baily. What is the duty of the baily? When the baily gives the coin, when he is sitting, how do you protect the coin? Now, what do we do? With due care. Is it cautiously cautious? We must protect it. They are saying this. This is 151. Now, do you agree?
Yes, mom, super. Okay, mom, super.
Okay, done.
Super, mom, super, mom.
Okay? Okay, done. Now, 151, you are watching it. Now, the baily is watching it. Now, he is watching it. However, some loss or destruction or deterioration. Something is offended. Something is offended. Now, the 100,000 cement is broken. Now, the baily is liable. Now, it is 152. Now, what are you saying? Things bailed. You have done a bail. Now, it is like 151. As much care, he is watching the baily. The baily is the baily. Now, the burden of proof is on him. The baily is watching it. However, what is happening? Now, the water is coming. The water is flowing. He should prove. Now, 151 is giving the utmost care. Now, it is coming to a loss or destruction or deterioration. The baily is proving his care. The baily is not liable to the loss. Do you understand? Did you understand the concept?
Yes, mom, yes, mom.
Yes, mom. Yes, mom.
Okay, good. Very good. Now, as I said, the care is given. He is liable. However, as I said, the utmost care is given. He is proving it. He is not liable. Okay, right? This is section 152. 152. Next, section 153 and 154 speaks about the right of the bailor. How is it? That is, the baily is inconsistent. Now, I am saying. I am giving the spoon. When you are going to another place, you have to go like this. On top of that, you have to sit. However, what are you doing? If it is inconsistent, what do we do? You do everything. You are doing it. You have to add it. Add two sections. 153 and 154 are the same examples. Now, I am giving it to you. I am giving it to you. I am telling you some terms and conditions. I am going to sit on the spoon. For one night, the spoon can go to 5 kilometers. Now, I am saying. However, you are doing it. You are sitting on the spoon. You are sitting on the spoon. Now, the spoon is going to hit the foot. Now, what is it? You are, one thing, you are in inconsistent. Other thing, your inconsistent act is causing my spoon to hit. Now, what is the remedy? In section 153, I can terminate the contract of bailment. I am giving the bailment. We will terminate it. Under section 153. Now, if I terminate the bailment, do I get a loss? 154, unnorth raised use of goods bailed. I said it. You can use it differently. If I get a loss, if the bailor gets a loss, the baily will compensate for the loss. So, it is the same example. One, I said, you can use the spoon. Now, I will terminate it. Where is 153? Now, can I terminate it? Now, I am getting a loss. Now, what should we do? 154, compensate it. Did you understand the concept? Now, I am giving the spoon. Now, you can sit and walk. However, what are you doing? You are driving the car. Now, if the car is driving, the spoon can not go up. So, that, when the spoon is moving, something happened to it. Now, I am doing my life. I am getting a big loss. So, in this way, you are giving it to the baily. Now, if it is a compensation, the baily is giving it to him. Now, termination under 153 or the compensation of loss under section 154. Okay, right?
Yes, mom.
Done. Now, the concept. Section 155, 156, 157. All three concepts are one. Okay? All three concepts are one. 155, 156, 157. Now, I am writing a key word. I am saying 155. That is, mixture plus consent. Now, write it. Mixture plus consent, 155. Mixture plus consent. 156. Mixture plus without consent plus separable. I am writing it. Do not forget. 155. Mixture plus consent. 156. Mixture plus without consent plus separable. 157. Mixture plus without consent plus inseparable. Plus inseparable. Done. Everyone? Everyone? Done. Fine. Now, what are you saying? Now, the baily is there, right? Who is giving it to him? The baily, what is it? I asked the bailor. I am giving it to the baily. Now, for example, I am the bailor. The bailor is the baily. Now, I have a 100,000 cotton. I am giving it to him. The 100,000 cotton is to the bailor. I have a 100,000 cotton. I am giving it to the bailor. Now, what am I doing? I give it to the bailor. Now, the bailor is giving it to me. Now, he is giving it to me. You are giving it to me. I am giving it to you. Now, I am giving it to the baily. I am giving it to you. Do not forget. Do not forget. Now, he is winning the 150,000 cotton. Now, they are winning. The interest of the bailor and baily is what? Now, the 100,000 cotton is to the baily. The rest is to the baily. So, this is 155. Now, mix it. Either the coin or the coin, we will win it. What should we do? With the consent, he is mixing it. It is a contract of bailment. Whether the coin is the baily or not, whether the loss is good or not, according to the proportionate share. How much share did you share? Now, I will talk about the share. I will talk about it. If the baily with the consent of bailor mixes the goods of bailor with his own goods, the bailor and baily shall have an interest in proportion to their respective shares. Now, proportion to their respective shares. I am saying an example. 100,000 is to the baily. 50,000 is to the baily. Now, what is the interest of the baily? If they are eating it. How is it? The share of the baily is to the baily. This is 155. Now, how should we do? This is the colored. With the consent of the bailor and baily, if two people are in agreement, we should mix it. Now, when we mix it, if the two people are in agreement, if the two people are in agreement, they will mix it. This is 155. Did you understand the concept? இந்த கான்செப்ட் எல்லாத்துக்கு புரிஞ்சுதா
மம் அகை இன்னும் ஒருவடி சொல்லுங்க மன
சர் இப்ப மிக்ஷர்னா என்ன உங்க பொருளும் என்னுடைய நீங்க சாப்பிர மிக்ஷரை நாம் பாருங்க பூண்டி இருக்குதா அவள் இருக்குது அந்த ஓம் இருக்குது சோ இவ்வளோ வேறு கட்டுல இருக்கு பொடுகட்டுல இருக்கு சோ இதெல்லாமே தனி தனி பொருள் நீங்க கலந்துருங்க இது பிக்கம்ஸ் தே மிக்ஷர் அதே போல தான் இங்கேயும் பெயிலார் பெயிலி இருக்காங்க இல்லையா இவங்களுடைய பொருள் வே வேறு இப்ப வந்து பிரபுசார் 50 மூட்ட பர்த்திக்கொட்ட வச்சுக்குறாரு நா 100 மூட்ட பர்த்திக்கொட்ட வச்சுக்கற இப்ப நா வந்து கன்செண்ட் கேட்கிறார் பிரபுசார் நீங்க 100 மூட்ட இருக்கீங்களா நா 50 மூட்ட வச்சுக்கேலா ரெண்டை கலந்துருவோம் அப்படிங்க ரெண்டை கலந்து இப்ப 150 மூட்ட விக்கிறோம் இப்ப 150 மூட்ட விக்கும்போது வித் மை கன்செண்ட் பெயிலார் பெயிலியும் கன்செண்ட் பண்ணி நம்ம விக்கும்போது இப்ப 150 மூட்ட விக்கிறோம் வச்சுக்கோங்களா இப்ப 150 மூட்ட குடு பைசா இருக்க அப்படிங்க 100 மூட்ட கான தோகைய பிரபுசார் எனக்கு செல்லுத்திருணும் 50 மூட்ட கானத தோகை அவர் எடுத்துக்கலாம் வித்ததில ப்ராப் வித்ததில எவ்ளோ அமௌண்ட் இருச்சு பிரபோஷனேட் ஷேர் என்னுடைய பங்கு எவ்வளவு அந்த விகா சாரத்தின்படி அவர் எனக்கு பணங்குடுத்துருணும் சரிங்களா இதுதா 155 இது புரிஞ்சுதெங்களா
புரிஞ்சுதெங்களா
ஆ சரிங்களா இவர் எனக்கு குடுத்துரணும் ஆதுவே 156ல என்ன கான்செப்ட் கேட்டீங்க நா 156ல என்ன கான்செப்ட் கேட்டீங்க நா அங்கயும் வந்து பெயிலாருடைய பெயிலியோட ரெண்டு கூட்ஸு கலக்குது ஆனா விதோட் தே கன்செண்ட் ஆப் தே பெயிலார் விதோட் தே கன்செண்ட் ஆப் தே பெயிலார் தகச்சிய செபரேபல் அப்படிங்களோ வாச் சொல்ல செபரேபல்னா பிரிக்கக் கூடிய தன்மை உள்ள அப்படிங்க அத்தோ சரிங்களா இப்போ என்னுடைய கூட்ஸ் பெயிலாராகி என்னுடைய கூட்ஸ் பிரபுசார் பெயிலியா இருக்காரு எங்களுடைய கேக்காமலே ரெண்டையும் கலந்துருர இப்ப கலந்து பிறகு நா சொல்றேன் ஆயு எதுக்கு நீங்க கலந்தீங்க என்னுடைய பொருளை எங்களுடைய குடுங்கு ரிட்டர்ன் பேக் பணிங்கன்னா கேட்கற அப்படி நா கேட்டனா பெயிலியான பிரபுசாருடைய லைப்லிட்டி என்ன அப்படிங்க தா விஷய இப்ப பர் எக்ஸாம்பில் இதுல இருக்க எக்ஸாம்பில் சொல்றேன் 100 பெயில்ஸ் ஆப் காட்டன் எங்கிட்டிருக்கு 100 பெயில்ஸ் ஆப் காட்டன் எங்கிட்டிருக்கு அதே மாறி பிரபுசார் கிட்ட ஹண்ட்ரட் பெயில்ஸ் ஆப் காட்டன் இருக்கு Indha, fastirika hundred bales of cottonla, ya abhina chikka, kuruyidu markpanappadritka. Nee, arthirikku kudiyah, hundred bales of cottonla, be abhina chikka, kuruyidirik, ipa rendu bales of cottonirik. Engittak kaya kamle, dailya gue Prabushar rendi kalantarar. Rendey kalantarar. Ipa kalanona, na solra, enudaya porulala return manigana, na solra abhina. Ipa enna pananu, ivare, seethi vetcha, uh, cottonsa tirikkinu. Seethi vetcha cottonsa tirikkinu, ipo, indha cottona tirikirathukaana selaveyum, separation charges ayum, plus. Separate pannamodhu, yedhada damages aedpatte, avu enak lossa irukana, indha motthatiyum, avr da vandu compensate pannikudukunno, abhina soru sorangala. Concept purujudengla? Without consent la, tirikakudiyapurukkalavir kalantukkara abhina, illa ning abhri panakudada, enak pichikudunga, na kettikran abhina. Andha tirikakudiyato gaya, what is the expenses incurred for separation? Appa separablela irukunno, goods vandu kalakappattak goods vandu, separable naturela irukunno. Separablela irikka abhina, separation kana, inkaraana amountavla voh adhayum, plus separate pannamodhu, yedhada damages. Bailar udaya goodsla yedhada damages aedpatrisna, andha damagesavr compensate pannikudukunno. Idhi yarudaya duty na, baili oru duty. Indha concept illathukpurujudha, one fifty six purujudha?
Purujudengla.
Ellathuk purujudha? Okay, very good. Adithu the one fifty seven. So one fifty seven. So one fifty seven enna sorangana, idhe concepta, angayum mixtureirikke, without a consentirikke, anaa enna na, the goods mixed are inseparable. Yendhagoodsa onna kalavya vandu baila, baila, baili vandu bailar udaya goods etthu kalantano? It is not inseparable, adha tirikkevee mudiyadu, tirikkevee mudiyadu elbala irukabhina. Appa enna panunun kettigina, bailar yelao amount of the goodsa bail pannano, adhikaana motthala loss evlaachu, adheyllaame baili vandu bailarku kudukkadu. For example, one fifty seven kor examples oru note panikkunga. Na noor mootta godhumavu taran, na noor mootta godhumavu taran. Baili vandu noor mootta maydamavu vachikkarar. Ivare enna pantrana, godhumavi, maydamavi, rendi onna setthu kalandu vittarla, oru plana pottkarar. Ipo motthama kalakidrarar, idhii separate pannamudimma?
Mudiyadu ma'am, mudiyadu.
Ipa mudiyadu, yena, ivarade naturee yepri irikke, inseparable naturela irikke. Adhanala enna panunna, motthamaana, na etra noor, noor mootta godhumavukuduthana, andha motthamana compensation amountayum, baili enak settle pannu. Idhu one fifty seven. Purujengla, one fifty five lindhu, one fifty seven marudi repeat pannra, one fifty five la mixtureirikke. Ba, bailar udaya gutto, bailioda gutto kalanduruthu, kalakkaradha with the consent narathidu, with the consent of bailar and baili. Idhu one fifty five. Appa adhalavarakudiyavaramanathepri pichikkarangana, according to the proportionate share, na yelao vikadacharam kudukrakunno, adhanpadi, andha vikiduthinbadi enak kudukkapadu. So adhavandu one fifty five. So one fifty six la enna na, ingayum mixtureirikke, but without consent, andha kalappu aedpatthak goods vandu separablela irikka abhina. Separate pannathukaana charges ayum, separate pannamodhu damages yedhava aedpatna, damagesavr compensate pannavindi, karama yarmaladu ka, the liabilities on the daily. Idhu one fifty six. One fifty seven la, innu, konshu differenceana concept, enna na, mixtureirikke, without a consentirikke, but enna na, the goods mixed are inseparable. Adham tirikkevee mudiyadu tanmayala irukku, for example, floor, mavu, mavu setthirinna, mavu tirikamudiyadu, yeah? So andhamarikka conceptla arukamodhu, appa actually yelao amount vandu bailar vandu kuduktaro, andha entire amountu baili vandu settle downpana. So idhu vandu one fifty seven. Indha concept ungalik purujudha? Okay done. Eppur naadi kettikla?
Ma'am.
Solunga ma'am. Ma'am, ipa audibla irkana liya, yeblonar enna?
Can't hear you ma'am.
Madam, ninga pessiriya, ninga pessiringan chulitthi, namakkuk kerkiliyante, veli le pidda vandu chalma ma'am, na.
Five minutes ka kettikya? Sari enna?
Ma'am, na class mooduncho nanasthi veli le pidda vendukidhikka ma'am.
Oh my god, adha da narey partispent lefta?
Madam, one fifty seven complete vandu, chapparan kettikka, one fifty seven.
One fifty seven varki kettikla, one fifty seven varki kettikla.
Uh, one fifty seven complete as, adhukappara.
Gudani oru message pottunna, enak kerkiliyante, yeah, me, yarikkingala, sari fine, listen. One thirty eight. Anaa, na ninga veli le? No, mute pannala, automatica vandu due to poor signal mute arukumathrakka, kerkliya, yeblonara pessnadu?
Neeru pessninganee terelam, ninga veli le, ninga payitthi.
It's an answer. Nangi polinga, arikka, okay fine, listen, 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 listen. One fifty eight la enna na? Restoration of expenses. Repayment by bailor of necessary expenses. Ipo, uh, na vandu oru watch vandu bailmentla kudukkara, chukkunga, ipa vandu, for example, ya watch vandu kettipochi, it didn't work, na vandu kudukkara. Ipo kudukkamodhu, kadakaar vandu, appa na solra, cell mattu maathivengan, solra, ambadhuba kudukkara, abhina soru na solidra. Sonna perigya vandu kadakaar solrarar, indhamari vandu, uh, watchla vandu innu narey partsla repair aayikka, adhanala da adhooda la. Adhanala na enna pantrana, idhu fadra, na vandu alla seripannivikkar, abhina soru. Allati seripannivikkarar. Seripannivachitthu noor bha kudungan soru kerkkarar. Ipo, indha amounta baila settle pannuma, illa yaan ketta, na ambadhubaikke thana bailment pottan, so that, na noor bha kudukkumadhan, demand mana mudiyadu. So what all the necessary expenses incurred, enna expensesla inkaraayirko to baili? Baili vandu adha preserve pandathukaavu, alladhu adha serisayirathukaavu? Ennalallanpanni adha batrapadikivikunno pannaro? Adhik yelao yelao expensesachu, andha alla expenses enna panunno, bailar vandu bailikik kudukunno, repay pannu, abhina soru sorangala. Purujudha? This is one sixty, one fifty eight. Purujudha ungalathukkun? Idhu kettikya?
Solunna, idhu orudharav sellunna ma'am.
Ah, marbi solunma? One fifty eight la, baili irkarka liya? Baili yaar, yaaridam nam oru porulopadachirukkamo, avga yaar udaya care, care la irkka, avga baili. Ipa baili vandu, andha property preserve pannu, ipa for example, ninga cementu puthukkuttinga, cementu mootta paadukakuduk. Ipo cementu mootta paadukakrakka, ingala varuthu bail edikke, so enna pantrara abhina? Avar tharpolen vangi moody vikkarar. Andha tharpolen oru aayar bhaik vangarar, vachkonga. Andha tharpolen aayar bhaik vangarar, vachkonga, ipa bailmentla, andha aayar bhaik ning enna pananu? Repay pannu avangalikke. Na, ningaya na sonana, tharpolen vangi pottusonana, ninga kerkakudada. So what all the necessary expenses incurred to preserve your goods, um, gooda preserve pandrathikka, avanikke enna na expenses sinkarachu? Adhalan enna panunno, bailar vandu bailikik kudukunno, soru sorangala, purujudha? Purujudengla?
Oh, purijidu ma'am, purijidu ma'am.
Okay done.
Orutthu, thakarathukaaga, salav seeraar, appri dhanama ma'am.
Amma, uh, bay, bay panna goodsa preserve pandathukaaga? Bail panna goodsa preserve pandathukaaga? Preserve pandathukaaga, enna na expensesachu, andha expensesla bailar vandu bailikik kudukunno, cheryam?
Madam, oru chinnada doubt ma'am.
Solunga sir.
Ipo avu kuduthirukkuda porulavada, adavada extra salaval chenchuli, poi kanakkaamcha enna ma'am pantradu?
Sir, poi kanakka kam, yeblo kanakkaamchala, adhavada avr repay pannanu. Ipa adha avr poi kanakka kamchirkarabhina, andha poi kanakka poiyin soru vandu, the baila should prove. Baili vandu enna prove panna, yelao onumeyalamayachu abhina avr prove pannu. Cheringla? Ipa vandu things, vandu bailment, adhalan varam, pinadiveru, na solra, paranga, ipa bail pannida, bailment kuttachu. Ninga panak kudukkumadigina, abhina, enak enna arukunna, I have particular lean on it. Na enna panla, ninga bailmentik yelao togay, oppu pannigala, adhoto gaya kudukkavarekka, naavar retain manivachikla, aankita. One, ninga kudukkavee, adha na vittanda panak edhikla.
In case, avr oru aayar bhaik oru, oru, idhu kuduktarana, ivar salaval chesaravundu, adhikna, rendayar bhaik salaval chetan, extra, abhina, abhina ma'am.
Adha da sir, one fifty eight kila vayinkala?
Sir, appa oru, oru power, adavada, adhimaa oru patthi giroodu, ma'am, the salaval chesaravandu, ipa, teyala kanakkeela, aayar bhaik kundanap, porulukkun, ayyar bhaik, salaval chesaravakapathanaya, abhina.
Narvane adha muttal thandha pannamattanga, first of all, adhanala da na enna pantrana, section one fifty twoa, roll pulay konduvaro. Avr enna solra, na utmost care kudutha, aanala adha alinzipalichapna, one fifty two la vandu, na liable illa, na solra. Ipo ayyar bhaik ning oru porulakudukdringana, ambadhar, na salav pannana, yoosikamattana, first of all. Na adha pannamattan, na nalladan pathukthada, kettipochi, soli, one fifty two la, na enudaya exceptionla veli vandrivayliya? Concept purujudha abhri solran.
Ah, purijidu ma'am, purijidu ma'am.
Ipo enak ning oru noor mootta cement kuttirigina abhina? Andha noor mootta cementoda valaya vandu, oru, oru, padanjan aayar bhaik vachkonga, na oru ayyar bhaik, na adhukka, adhukka, paadukakka, salav pannana, okay. Na ambadhar salav pannamattan, liya, so vandu, na care and cautiousa, andha padanjan, andha anjayathikla, na mulchiduva. In case, avayum thaandhiyadu mulichipochi, alinzipochi, abhina, I'm not liable for the loss, so only one fifty two la, na exception claim manikuvan. Purujudengla?
Yes ma'am.
Sari fine. Uh, adithu pathigina, one fifty nine. Uh, one fifty nine. One sixty two, idhrendu tanik concept, yena, adhittha gratitude as bailmenta chorro. Paname illama vandu orutthuk, inama kudukkaranachukkonga, andha inama kudukkamodhu, avr vandu kurupitthu tehikla, kudutha porulathiripik kerkkarar, abhina. Appa adhudi liability yepri ikkun, thanni concepta pappu. So one fifty nine ayum. One fifty nine ayum, one sixty two ayum, thanni concepta vachidhinga, idhi pappu nam pakkamattu. Okayva, one fifty nine and one sixty, twoa thanni concepta pappu. So that, we are going to section one sixty, so nallathenjukkunga, one fifty nine on one sixty two speaks about the gratitude as bailment. Perindanme oru porulorutthuk kudukkarabhina, andhamadriyana bailment epa cancelavu, adhularku kudiyah, andha lenderoda ayum, andha barover udaya liability enangara, thaniyapappu. So one fifty nine and one sixty, uh, twoa vandu, apriyavandu retain manikkunga, we are going to section one sixty. Section one sixty la enna solrabna, written of goods bailed. On expiration of time or accomplishment of purpose. So one sixty padi, uh, na first sona example padi, ipa thunithachu mulichthangan, enna panunno? Ipa patthanala time kerkaranga, patthanalekka vandu thachchudanu. Appa expiration of time, appa vandu, patthanala aichna, onu thiripik kuduthanu, alladhu thachchumudichthanga, adha, the ten days kumadhi thachchumudichthanga na. Uh, the purpose is accomplished, enna purposeka kudukkamo, andha purpose neravaitra padichna, return madhigana. So idhu da, so one sixty varigana, adha soladu. Uh, delivery according to baila's direction, the goods bailed without demand, important word, without demand. Na demandmanathukumunnaadiye, without demand, as soon as time for the bail has expired. Or the purpose for which the bail has been accomplished. One, first, mune conditionirikke, one sixty kikila. Modala, bailar vandu, baili kitta demandmanathukumunnaadiye. Demandmanathukumunnaadiye, baili, bailarikke return kudukkadanu. Andha returnana, yepri ikkunna, one bailarkittai return kudukunno, alladhu bailar, varayar edamathu kudukkacholiyinna, na, adha kurupitthu person kitta return kudukala. First, appo, second point la enna na, andha time for bailment expire aayidhu, expire aapodhu, expire aayidzu, abhina kudukthadu. Moonavadu. Expire date varigya waitpanavendi avasimella, even before the expiry date, andha kodukkappatta object enamo, adha kundana vandu, enna nokkathuka kodukappaduka, nokkum neravaitra padichna, kudukkaru, abhina soru sorangala. Indha concept purujudha, one sixty? Okay fine, ellaruk purujudha?
Innoladav sellunna ma'am.
Sir, one fifteen, ipa vandu, na oru porulukkutak kudukkara, sir, bailmentla kudukkara, cheringla, ning enna pananu? Now, uh, ask for section one forty eight, enna pakkrona, on accomplishment of purpose. Na enna purposeka kudukkana, andha purpose mulichisra, ning enak return manungara, da bailment udaya contracti. Ipo vandu, for first, na sonna example padi, ipa na chudhar thikka, unga kettak kudukkara, ninga tailor. Ningavandu, enudaya, enudaya thuniyavandu, ninga kurupitthu naalukkuru thachchumudikkenu. Ipo vandu, na thakka solra, na demandmanathukumadhi, first pointana, na chudharak kudungana, kerkamunna, ning enak return madhiguna. First, rendaadu, patthanala tavana solidhinga, on the expiry of tenth day, tenth day expire aapmo, ning enak return madhiguna. Alladhu, na arnali thachchumudichtabhina, on the purpose is accomplished, enna purposeka kudukkana, andha purpose accomplished nice, na ning kudukkana. So mune condition for return, apriyin ning return pannamodhu, bailaraki enidamay kudukslaa, alladhu, na varayaradha mukkittak kuduthan, panga, illan, ningavareyada direction soru kettigana, andha morayala ning adha dispose pannala. Purujudengla? So that, return kudukkamodhu, without demand, bailaraki na, kudungana kerkarikuna, ning enak return kudukthadu. Innu one, at the expiration of time, time expire aapna, appa, appa kudukkala, alladhu, ning enna panla? Kudukkappatta object enamo, adha neravaitrisna, adha neravaidna oddha, enak return kudukthana, so idhu da concept, purujudengla? Ellathuk purujudha?
Yes ma'am.
Sari fine. Adithu one sixty one oru modikiran. Next class, one sixty two la thupakala, cheringla? One fifty one la enna sorangana, ipa na malasunna madhri, time expire aayidzu, galayamodikila, uh, avr vandu returnai pannalanachukkonga. Ipa na solra, uh, indha June maasa, one na thidi, oru porulukkutak kudukkara. Kurupitthu oru vishyitha vandu, ning adha porulamala pandukka, for example, na oru, uh, tangakkadik kudukrakana, indha tangukkambala maathikukudukunno, illa oru thunikukudukkana, thuniyavandu thachchukudukunno. So indhamadriyala vandu, indhalamadharan, na oru contract pottuk kudukkara. Na enna solra, one na thidi kudutha goodsa, ning iroda thidi enak return kudukkunno, solra. Ninga enna pantrigya, one na thidi kudukkaringa, ninga demandmanathukumadhi kudupinga, expect pannra, expiry aapu kudukkala. Adhuk apravandutti, uh, purposena accomplish aagala, ipirikka pachchutla. Na iroda thidi vandu kettikka, ninga kuduklanachukkonga, irothonna thidi lindhu, irothonna thidi kaprona, kudutha goodsmala yedhada loss aedpatidhu, abhina, motthala liabilityu baili maladha arukku. Purujudengla, ipa for example, na vandu, oru noor mootta cementa unga kittak kuduthveekkara. Ipo noor mootta cement vandu irikke. Noor mootta cement vandu irikke, ipa noor mootta cementa iroda thidi, ning enak thiripi returnla kudukrakunno. Aan noor mootta cementa ning iro, kudukala, iroda thidi, night, bayangramala payidhu, irothonna thidi, ellasementu kattik, kattiyayidhu, vachkonga. Ipo, iroda thidi, ninga kuduthruthingana, okay, irothonna thidi, ungalode liabilitykla vandrichse. Ipo, after the expiration of date, na ennekisana, andha date of expiry aana nalal, andha very next day, liability is on the daily. Appa baili dhan, andha noor mootta kana, kanakkiyavrtha aedukkuro, adha compensate pannikudukkudo, avr udaya kadameyainu, then it is not returned. Written date kaprona, return manavendiya, date appa kudukama, written date thaandhiyis, abhina, the liability is on you, that is, liability is on the daily. Idhu da one sixty one soladu, indha concept purujudengla? Ellathuk purujudha?
Maruvathu pair purujadukka.
Okay fine.